Yeah.
It's not my fault.
Hmm, awesome. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This one.
Fish in the back.
Yeah.
No.
Did you like it, ladies? Welcome to the full council, welcome to members of the public and the press. And if you'd like to make any apologies.
Yes, that's a big look, councillor Free, councillor Setfield and councillor Wunden may. We'll be late six years, this might be.
Any questions? There are applications for this decision. Um. Because here we're all there.
No. Message to say that they've been charged up with a case from I'd say on this morning had been taken by my family. But we're going to be able to make.
So, Hertfordshire Council Ward member, let's receive a report from board members. So, anybody, we've had a written report, the Bartram. Evening, so their report from councillor O'Driscoll, councillor Star. Yep. Okay, yeah, we've, um, over the last month, I've been involved in various aspects of county council business. Including establishing a place making task and finish group, met for the first time last week. Um, which is going to be exploring how the community can be better involved in consultation. The task and finish groups were set up specifically because we're obviously keenly aware of the number of houses that Hertfordshire has been asked to have over the next two years. And, um, we feel it's important. All aspects, all demographics across the county are fully involved in the consultation process, our younger people, those of working age. Um, so we're looking at how we can better improve engagement ahead of the local plan coming out next September, I believe. So, the task and finish groups will be meeting over the next six months. Um, we've been working with external, um, agencies as well. And we'll be putting a report in that will help to prepare the community engagement document that will be part of the, um, the whole, um, local plan. Engagements and it's a battery document has to be produced, so we're involved in that heavily. I'm also involved in the housing development working group and we had, uh, another meeting about last week, which, um, that's been an ongoing piece of work I've been involved with for the last eighteen months. That's looking up at setting, potentially setting up an external housing development company that can, is wholly wholly owned subsidiary of Hertfordshire Council. That can hopefully push forward with building the social and affordable housing that we so desperately need across the county. Um, we saw the opportunity to look at the business model for the first time last week. And, um, I raised significant concerns around the business model because there seems to be something of an aversion to risk as far as lending is concerned. Um, the whole lending for the business model was based upon, I guess the easiest way to explain it is, um, a payback mortgage rather than an interest only mortgage. So, we were looking at paying back the full borrowing over a twenty year period, rather than maybe at the end of the term with housing, it could be up to thirty years. Selling some of the stock off to pay the money back that had been borrowed. So, we're challenging that as well. I'm looking for another model because it's becoming increasingly obvious from meetings that we've had over the last weeks, management board today. Um, and all of the preparations for the budget next year, that there's a massive, a massive black hole. Um, in the finances for Hertfordshire Council, the figures that we talked about today, thirty million for twenty six, twenty seven. Um, and council needs to find ways of making savings and one way to make savings is to invest in capital infrastructure projects that take alleviates pressure on the revenue budget. Uh, because at the moment, we're spending a hell of a lot of money on, uh, emergency housing. Think it's gone up, the figure I was given, it's gone from forty nine thousand pound, forty nine thousand nights. Uh, accommodation in, in hotels for emergency housing last year to already this year, already up to fifty one thousand nights. Temp accommodation, emergency housing. So, analogy we used, it's, it's like trying to empty a sinking ship with a leaky bucket. Um, so we need to put something in place to try and address that. Uh, I'm also involved with scrutiny through the Community Scrutiny Committee in, in a few very interesting projects, one of which will be calling out for public experience. We're looking broadband coverage across the whole of the county. Um, I've started work on that and we're particularly concerned about those areas where there is really bad coverage. I don't think Ross suffers too badly from that, but if people are aware of any areas where there is particular bad broadband coverage and we're looking to get answers from broadband providers into what their plans are, how we can improve access for all those residents across the county who don't have good. I'm also going to be scrutinising the year of delivery. The count, twenty seven's been branded the year of delivery for Hertfordshire Council with lots of capital product. We'll be looking carefully at how those projects are delivered, both at the halfway point in July next year and January twenty twenty seven. Okay. Ladies.
Yeah.
Councillor Boyne first.
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, I had quite a long talk, Bob Barnes, to tell you on the, um. Housing, uh, at, at present, we've got four people in B and B in Ross. Um, at two thousand two hundred and forty pound a week.
Really?
One of those people have been in since Christmas Eve, one of them's been in for eighteen months. Um. There are loads and loads of properties, there's three properties that I can think of off the top of my head, that house in the properties that are all vacant, that have all been vacant for more than two years. That need repairs. Um, I think the, the best way that I can think that it can be addressed is Pinnacle House and Platform House and Conexus House and Two Rivers House and Guinness House and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Need to get on with the, the work that needs doing within a timely manner. And to allow their properties to be let out because it's costing us as a county an absolute fortune. In the meanwhile, um, Platform House in the building and other eight thousand properties rather than doing up. To me, it, it would seem, um, we, we have quite a lot of strength, particularly with housing associations that are so big to say we would be unable to, um, trend forward any of their properties until the properties that they already have that are left empty. Are housing people.
I'm, I'm very sympathetic to that position and we're putting pressure on, um, every, every level of executive in the council to try and step forward, even today, yeah. Constantly asking those questions, we're constantly pressurising, we're constantly putting the, the political, um, those that hold the political power under pressure to make sure that they, that they, they get the executive to move forward with it, but. And we, we, we can't, we can't stop the payments going through and we, we don't have power to, to stop them making the decisions.
I understand that, but we've got like last night, the night shout, it was full of eighteen people. Today I had a young person that is extremely vulnerable, disabled, um, autistic, fleeing from domestic abuse. A child, a parent either who is twenty five, who doesn't even have a room in the night shelter. Like something's got to give.
It is unacceptable, I quite agree.
Thank you.
I, I was, I was just wondering, uh, with these thirty million pounds savings or potentially has to be done for next year. Um, is Muddles Farm at risk of not being developed?
I have been assured on multiple occasions that it's not, it's part of a deliverance plan, um, and that the muddy for that has already been set aside.
It's capital, aren't they, haven't you? Especially it's only there, haven't you?
No.
It is.
Understand that, but so for housing will come from the capital budget rather than revenue budget. Uh, so I was just thinking the same issues that they've got there, but.
No, it's not, it's not under risk.
Um, yes, uh, there's been a lot of debate around the derelict empty property. So, for tonight, I thought, what would benefit the town council, given that, um, it is about a report from us that does the town council, not just about what they have happening in Hampshire. I'm just going through a list of planning approvals that I have facility. At the town centre of my ward, to balance that debate, to show that there is also positive, um, work going on in terms of repurposing and also refurbishing the property. Um, I'm just going to run through about eight or nine, uh, just quickly. Two, five marketplace, sixteen apartments, two commercial units, Trenchad House, three apartments, foreign school in Y Street, three apartments, one refurbished. Semeris Cottage, one apartment, one eighty Cross Street, one apartment, six, seven Semeris Street, one apartment, eleven High Street, one, one refurbishing apartment. The one fifty two High Street, two apartments, then we've got two pending, one Semeris Street, which is two apartments, and we've got Little Say Flats. But can I finish this please? Yeah. Little Say Flats, which has got a planning approval on it for six apartments, but where the new developers have decided to actually put a new design, which I'm supporting fully. Again, plan approval, that in total sets the partners, there is a lot of things going on in this, in, in the town. The imbalance is how you allocate the private partners that have been built in a way that is effective, as we were saying in terms of track the juice, that is it fifty one thousand nights?
So far this year.
For so far this year that we are actually paying for as a council in terms of, um, temporary accommodation. So, there is a lot being done, but it, it just doesn't seem to, to, to what we need in terms of temporary accommodation options. Thank you, cheer, that really wants to come.
Oh, yeah, sorry, could I ask how many of those properties are one bedroom properties?
I, I didn't pick.
Okay, and could I ask?
Be one bedroom, some will be two bedroom.
Yeah. Are you aware that the maximum that someone can claim on housing benefit for a one bedroom property is three hundred and seventy nine pound per month?
And, and they won't be able to afford the private ones.
Exactly.
That is a national problem, we know that.
Well, it's, it's, it's a Ross on Y problem actually, because if you go.
Ross with rent smocks.
If you go to Leamster, yeah, and Newland, and Hereford, um, and Kingston, and Ledbury. Ross on Y is the most expensive place in the county, which is why I've been asking for the county LHA to be split up. Because actually you are not going to get a one bedroom property for less than six hundred.
No.
The maximum, the maximum that a person can claim for housing benefit on universal credit now, if they've got additional needs, is four hundred pound per month. And that then leaves them four hundred pound per month to live on. So, on average, people are topping up their rents by two hundred and fifty pound per month, leaving them a hundred and fifty pound per month to live on for everything.
And what do you think the solution is?
I think the solution is proper social housing.
Yes.
And now, social housing that has been left out over the last six months is also above the LHA. So, the, all of the Conexors properties, all of the properties up on Semeris Village that are classed as social housing are already above the social housing allowance, therefore putting each person that lives in them into poverty.
And, and the irony is that the percentage of affordable housing in Ross that developers hardly are open for, it's ten, four units, was forty percent. And yet in other parts of the county, it's only twenty five percent. So, there is something not working here.
No, no, social housing is only twenty percent, I believe.
Forty percent affordable.
No, 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 it's only twenty percent less than market.
Well, it depends what you mean by affordable.
It's not affordable, is it? That's my whole point, it's not for.
I saw, sure.
Okay, I think we'll, we'll try and rewind if we can. Uh, what was the motion?
Valerie was.
Sorry. Sorry, it's okay, Martha, just a quick one for, for, and I don't go, um. With regard to broadband and the services, as I, ISP, obviously we're aware of pocket version now at all. But if it, most people are aware that it was supposed to be by the end of twenty five, the rollout of digital replacing the copper analog telephone services, that's been delayed somewhat. But I can tell you that Big G certainly are encouraging people to install fibre all the way, fibre premises. And they've been offering a special price, the same price for a fibre to the premises monthly as it is to have a digital, they call it some gear line. Um, and they have currently, I can't tell you what it is exactly, but there's also a considerable offer at the moment with reducing the installation cost of the fibre to the premises. Now, you would therefore have a much, a typical sold level of service is eighty twenty. Now, that would be the same price whether you went Sogia or fibre.
I think they're talking about air, but it just isn't practical because these are in people in literally in the middle of nowhere, where they haven't got the cables, there isn't the infrastructure. I mean, we're talking about rural Herefordshire here and.
Well, it, it means.
Percent of residents still haven't got access to.
It, it's effectively how far you are from a green box.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's just, it's just not.
Absolutely. I think Ross, Ross is relatively.
Get it, and that would give people that can, fibre premises would give them a considerably improved service up to a thousand. Which, which, just, just for people to be aware, there could be an offer if it's available.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Liston, uh, assuming you're happy to propose your version.
Uh, absolutely, yes, of course discussed, yeah.
This was discussion on the second of the, so second of.
So, um, it's been pre-circulated, um, it is, uh, all there in documentation. Um, it's been written with support from, uh, various councillors between cross parties. Um, there is a slight typo in there that councillor Driscoll is spot on tonight, um, so ten points to you, um, in two point three. Um, where it says, uh, such exceptional sessions shall be here strictly to maximum duration of fifteen minutes in total, or a maximum of five minutes per town councillor, that should be per ward councillor. Um, since sending this out, I have had some, uh, people get in contact with me with some possible amendments, which of course they're more than, uh, willing to put forward tonight, which would be, um. That it states in there that there, um, once it's been pre-circulated, any questions that, um, devised from those, uh, pre-circulated reports can be done so with the ward councillor in their own time. Um, rather than taking up, uh, town council business, um, time. However, um, it was thought perhaps wasn't quite, uh, uh, right or fair and that there should be a, a short allowance for, for, uh, some time for questions to be asked if so wished. Um, however, I do feel that in there where it says, unless, um, I can't find the word right now, um, unless, um, agreed to by the, the chair. Um, then, then we don't have the questions, but obviously that's open to anyone to put that proposal amendment forward. Um, the, the reason of, of putting this through is again, uh, various town councillors from cross parties and their frustrations of how long, um, the ward councillor updates can go. Sometimes they can go up to forty five minutes and then become a bit of a talking shop, which just isn't appropriate when we have tight schedules and busy agenda. Um, so it's, uh, another way of trying to streamline these meetings. Um, also, I have various members of the community, um, that come and ask me, what have our county councillors done, uh, this, this, this month, this week? Um, I tell them, I give them an update, um, but some members would like to see an actual written report. Um, so it was thought that these, when these reports are pre-circulated, they'll then be on our system for the town council. So, anyone can go onto our, our website, um, and, and seek them out so they can hold, uh, they can, well, they've got transparency, um, and some accountability for county councillors for those that require it. Um, so that, that's kind of where we are at, I, uh, yeah, so, uh, questions, uh, whatever.
Councillor Driscoll. I'm, I'm not particularly against this, this motion. Uh, I want to point out a few, a couple of things though, um, there are many parishes across the county. Country where county councillors aren't members of town or parish council. I know there are lots of, there are certain wards, uh, certain councillors might have a dozen parishes within their ward, certainly the case for one or two county councillors, I know. Those parishes, it's almost impossible for the, the county councillor to visit those, um, those parishes and they do not get, um, a, a report from their county councillor on, on a regular basis, if at all in some cases. Um, I'm not saying Ross is lucky to have three county councillors, you can judge that for yourselves, but Ross does have three county councillors and we do all sit on, on the, on the, on the town council. I am keenly aware that there's only so much county business that is done between these meetings. Sometimes I think we're, we end up sharing what we're going to say between ourselves because we're on the same meetings half the time. So, I, I do wonder how much value there is in three separate reports, I'm just putting that out there. I do wonder whether there might be value in one county report that keeps people up to date on what's been happening, which the three county councillors all contribute to. And then we could take it in turns to, to submit a report on behalf of the three county councillors and rotate it meeting to meeting. Um, that might be a more sensible way of doing it, but I'm open to discussion, want to listen to the views of everybody at the meet. What's the window?
Uh, I was only really going to say, yeah, that, that sounds like a plan. I, I was quite happy with Dan's original proposal and the format in, in, in the document, but I think the one report from the three county councillors makes some sense, certainly, so, yeah.
Councillor Liston.
Um, I think it's for those town councillors, uh, councils, sorry, that don't have reports from their county council, for them to be holding their county councillors to account for the residents, but also for the town itself to know what their county councillors are doing it. Um, I perhaps sometimes wonder whether we do have great value for money having three county councillors sit on it, our town council, because I wonder if we, if we had three other town councillors.
County councillors.
So, no, three other town councillors that weren't county councillors, we would be getting more work done for the town perhaps, rather than being double hatted, but that's a question for another day perhaps.
Yeah. Just one issue, how did you? No, I'm going to go to councillor Boyne then.
And I completely disagree with having one, um, report to cover all three county councillors. All three county councillors are voted in to do their own duties, they each have their own duties, therefore they are each responsible for their own duties and should each provide. To report, um, and so tonight, obviously that one, that one discussion took seventeen minutes, not including Louise. Um, we didn't have councillor Bartram's because he kindly sent a written report. What often happens in these meetings is, come on, we've got to move on, we've got to move on, time's short, time's short. I think it would be really sensible for the town council to have a written report. If I'd have known on what Louis was going to say, or what councillor O'Driscoll was going to say, I could have jotted down what I wanted to ask, that could have been dealt with outside of the town council meeting, as it should be. Their county councillors' reports should not be being dealt with within the town council meetings, town council meetings of town council business. Also, um, as members of the public, very kindly, the Ross Gazette had given the three county councillors each a, um, a, a part in the newspaper. For which to write down what they have been doing as county councillor, which wasn't used. So, if they're not going to use, um, a written report in the newspaper, which they obviously wanted, but aren't using it for county councillor reports. They're not going to give us a, a report or there's consideration whether they'll give us a written report. You know, how are they to be held accountable to the public at the end of the day?
Councillor Bartram first, then. I agree, I agree with councillor Liston, can we have a vote on it? I think everybody's in agreement with it, aren't they?
Good. I, I think other people want to talk.
I think if, if people go to councillor's first and then.
Yeah, um. I mean, with respect to the residents, there's a whole list of YouTube videos on H C C website, which shows exactly what people are doing in Hampshire. But people don't watch them to see what we're doing and there's attendance records, if there's ever been a bar to say, and where I think the benefits. There's often issues that come out of the town council that I take forward for you with, with the teams in the county council, I've done that quite a few times successfully. So, I can, in a way that, if you had, if you had eighteen town councillors who weren't burdened with county council work, you could focus on the town council. But there's also benefits other than the council.
I would give you that.
As we go into the report, I mean, I succulently the chief and secretary Paul, and my report will just be in addition to whatever's on there, but that would be my approach.
It's not unfair, I have to tell you. Thanks, yeah, uh, I just wanted to say that councillor Liston gave great rationale as to why he proposed what he has. Uh, I think it would give us greater accountability, transparency and control for the residents of Ross. Um, last week, the majority of the party around the table pushed out a leaflet and on the front page it said, uh, you spoke, we got things done. And that gives the inference that we're listening, you're listening to residents and responding. I think this would be a great forward, there's a lot of models out there, they don't see the great work that's done in here all day and the week, and I think this would be a great, um. Mechanism by which they can, because it would be a written report, it would be on the website. And as much as the, uh, the video is great, how many people fall through two hours, but if it was a document on the website, people will read it.
A lot of people don't have accessibility today, but.
Uh, I have to admit, I, I do agree with that completely and I agree with you, Louis, about town councillor going to the county councillors, um, but I think the rules have to be quite clear. Um, it needs to be about the county stuff that you do not the town, the town stuff, the level, um, that we do get, I'm not saying that you do it, I'm just saying that sometimes that will be here. It's done, actually, I would suggest the town level, but that's not everybody.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I take on board what everyone's said, um, councillor Star, um, I agree, there's lots of information out there, like you said, on YouTube, things like that. But if dealing with someone like, for instance, my husband, he would not be able to sit there watching and have everything, he needs everything in layman's terms. Though I think even these written documentations, these little reports that we receive, it's going to be so much clearer for most of the community to understand in a short, short brisk version and a two hour YouTube video for starters. Um, and, and also, uh, councillor Bartram, thank you very much for submitting out your report today. Um, however, I felt like, um, when I read it, it was a very, very tiny paragraph on what actually been happening locally and the, the, the issues you've been, um, addressing. And I didn't actually find there was much information from that and it just went straight on to county councillor, uh, county level issues, so I think we need to have a bit more. issues. So I think we need to have a bit more clarity with the reports on um what you really want us to understand and what what's going on and not just muddying it a little bit, this is a little bit of what I've done in Ross and then this is what I've done for the rest of the county. It actually just seems a little bit, just like a little side snack and to me, I thought I could have actually done more information from that first paragraph, which I can then iterate to the rest of the community myself as well. But, um, yeah, I fully agree with having these reports singly as well and not as a a joined one, that's, yeah, thank you.
I tend to actually mind whether it's a single one or find all the county councillors. I I personally think that they worked very effectively as a team. Without them, we would have not have got the two hundred thousand market house, market town fund.
Well, I've got three hundred.
Um, but can I have the microphone? Now, time and time again, councillor Lister, you interrupt me, so please be polite.
I think that's a bit harsh.
No, it's not.
It's not harsh, I apologize.
Thank you.
May I just, on the table, that makes me feel quite anxious.
Yeah, I try not to, but I do get irritated. Um, then but the the extraordinary market uh town fund has funded two hundred K of resurfacing our roads and some of our footpaths. That, uh, they've just obtained it again for this year. Um, so in accordance with our um uh planning committee, that that is all in train now, so I'd like to thank them on that, but I I do think the motion is critical.
Just a couple of points of power here. I will signpost the YouTube videos of my my report, particularly the full council, because it was a full council, I pinned down the leader for this two hundred thousand again. It was the fourth year we had it, they weren't going to do it until I pinned it down, so I'm quite happy to do a written report, but I would like to say, of course, so if people want to look at the YouTube videos, they should do, because that does show what we're doing. And the second thing is, I don't want to cover my case work. I deal with my clients, my residents on a very confidential basis. They know I don't, any email addresses I have anything, I would rather not go into case work at all. So that does obviously exclude a lot of the work that I do on a regular basis, but I would like that to at least accept it. Because that's a fair to deal with that on a public level.
Yeah, um. Uh, just, just, I mean, I know we're all different and we all communicate with our residents in different ways. I'm sure many of you know I'm I'm active on social media and so I want to see what I've been doing, what I've been engaged with. You can always find out, there's there's a record going back over months and years of all the stuff. Oh, yeah, but I I don't know, not everybody is wired to do that, you know, and there were some people that have have spent hours speaking to residents and and communication happens in different ways and and horses for courses. And and just to back at what councillor Utting said, um, it was the the only reason that was the extraordinary markets town fund came by was because the little democrats as a group listed it including the budget and support for the budget this year only got through because that was one of the things, but one of several that we insisted had to be supported. So that wasn't it that we we brought as a group and that's well spent, I believe, um by the by the town council. As I said, I'm I'm not averse to doing the written reports, I'm not averse to doing a singular one each or or combined one either way. I've just made the point that, you know, we are going to be repeating a lot of stuff in the reports and and that's fine. I do, I and it's not that I don't want to do it, but I should just make the point that there isn't a statutory obligation for councillor, for county councillors to provide that to the town council. In law, there is not a statutory obligation, but because it's it's good practice and we want to make sure that we're communicating well both with the town council and with residents. So I I just want to be be aware that with a motion, how much, you we you can't change what is a legal requirement on county councillors by a motion insisting that we give the county councillors provide written reports to all meetings, because it's county councillors aren't, according to the law, um, with that, they're not required to provide communication with, as it's called, lower tier councils. I think that's an unfortunate term, but that that's the way it is phrased. We do, we want to, and we will, and we will continue to do so, but just we need to be careful how we frame the motion in that we can't change what um the legal requirement for what county councillors are actually supposed to provide to uh town stroke parish councils. I think that's probably a better way to put it.
Yeah, you can't compel.
You can't, no.
Okay, councillor board, another thing.
I think the whole point was, it was taken up up to three quarters of an hour, town council meeting. And to listen to reports that, to be perfectly blunt, some of which were nothing to do with county work when people are talking about sweeping up leaves. Um, I I think at the end of the day, county councillors do have a certain amount of money go in, out of the public purse for their role. Therefore, if the county councillors would prefer it, that we each individually write to them and ask for a report, then that's what will happen. Because actually you are obligated to let each councillor know if asked what you are doing in your role as county councillor. We were trying to get an easy way to spend less than three quarters of an hour talking about county council work within the town council meeting when everyone complains that town council meetings go on too long and that then things are very quickly overlooked and brushed to one side that actually should be um robustly um dealt with and talked about in town council meetings, because so much time's been wasted by county council stuff. I'll leave that up to the county councillors' discretion.
Okay, so final one. I think the irony is, I don't get the sense that anybody is against this and yet we seem to be spending an awful lot of time discussing it and with the the appearance of disagreeing, I don't think any of us disagree. I think we're all quite happy with a written report from the county councillors, it could have been put to bed ten minutes ago.
Councillor Bartram did put a a supporting vote in, so we could have wrapped this up.
Listen, it's councillor Bartram. I wanted to make sure everyone's got a chance to say.
Fair enough, yeah.
So I think going on from that, then I think I'm looking to councillor Lister to propose.
Yeah, I am proposing also, and as it is.
Councillor McAvoy seconded it originally, so, yes.
Okay, so we have all in favour? Okay, so moving on to public participation, uh. Any members of the public like to answer the question? Bit note, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's changing the other way around, so the public can do a bit of say about. But um, that is on the voting trail. I think a couple of points that I would have set on the work that's around the table there is that a three in one report might work at the moment because you've got three little sitting on the same political party and work together. But perhaps that won't be the case in what I think in future. And also, it's not the case that in future, it might be even the people that attend the meetings, and these county councillors should be external people. I think everybody around the table, including in their town, the county councillors were external people, they can be one in that report, that should be important people. So just from a public spot of view, I'd just say on the end of that, the was asking, yeah, there's accountability and transparency, one is important. And two, the county councillors are supposed to encourage accountability, you know, and transparency. So let's hope that those reports can then be seen by the public at Ross on the um on the town council website. We can all get to see what um what great stuff that is going to be doing for Ross and Mike. Dick is very bad on this, what we've been stuck with back there is housing and housing is just one element of something that's going on in Ross and Mike. Anyway, um, the other thing I want to dig out on, on January, there's a a item about management committee, like that stops and whether that's sort of like the role of the mayor goes back to. Is I'd like to just ask if anybody round the table or a few of you would like to comment, who were involved or wanted to be at it. Why we want to be a manager committee in the first place, because it's not wrong to have a management committee and does push the danger that it can be controlled, so. Um, I don't know if anybody would like to comment who's involved in the champion managing.
Okay, so we could have a confidential item at the end of the scene, so we will uh vote to resolve that publicly, so if someone happened to be proposing, da da, councillor Wyndham, uh seconded, councillor O'Driscoll, all in favour. Lose again?
These blinking snowflakes on this page is putting me off.
I'm going to bring ocean lift you to bat.
I love the snowflakes.
Look, we have that agenda blocked. Did not have snowflakes, so it's making it difficult to reach.
It could be snowballs, come on, Vic, guys.
Uh, okay, so councillor. Oh, it's, shall we have a proposer to sign the minutes of class meeting? I'm happy to propose second. How's the whole, all those in favour? Okay, so we're moving on to committees. Uh, so to consider nominations for appointments, subcommittees, everybody happy on their committees or?
Um, I'd like to link to the ones that you, then I'd like to leave finance, planning and development as well, please.
Uh, I'd like to join me with this.
Yeah, it's the other one else who'd be joining with back in planning, aren't we, on the ground, um.
And it was joined.
I know councillor Free had mentioned, she's obviously not here, but she had suggested she might do. I mean, um, but obviously I haven't checked that with her today, but she has expressed. Maybe, no, so maybe if we put it on the next agenda, just because otherwise I'm worried that planning meetings don't be able to go ahead if we haven't got enough members. So we won't do it for now, but I'll include this on the next agenda.
I'll track then the planning one until we know, Sarah would like to say this stuff.
Okay.
Can we vote on those together?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I'm happy to propose that and councillor Bowles second, all those as well. Okay, so to receive note minutes from all meetings, prove any recommendations. Just notes from management committees and then a recommendation management committee, uh which is a recommendation to the full council to abolish the management committee in the state nurse. On the basis that we developed the first element of that recommendation at the last meeting going in February, correct?
Yes, so the, um, yeah, so that's going to February, it's just the second part of it.
And for a small recommendation.
Yes, fine. And well, as you know, the the idea of changing methodology to us, we call the seniority length service method was approved. Um, and it is just a question of the actual details of it. I have sent the document to the clerk with that because it affects so much. I I don't know whether everybody else was got a circulation of it, uh but it does explain that you would have a list of when you were first elected to the council, there are various other ways, there are one or two things that perhaps are optional, for example, if two or three people first were elected to the council on the same day, should there be a priority? So you could do, you could choose different ways, you could draw it out of a hat, you could say it was the person with the most votes, or you could vote on it. So minor details are there, but the the whole principle um is is approved. We suggested that as councillor Fred is currently nominated deputy and the convention is that the deputy takes over in the following year. We suggested that that should be allowed to go ahead in the coming year uh and that it should take effect after that. The the reason for not postponing it till after the election would be that there simply wouldn't be time, because the election happens, you have to have the full council meeting when everything is done within days of that, and it would be too late for a new council to work it out. So it's a fairly simple method. Everybody gets a chance for the honour and privilege of being mayor and um it it it's completely transparent. Um, and no possibility of uh any sort of bias would come into it. Uh, and and you would ensure you had got somebody who was an experienced councillor uh and it would be a reward for their efforts over many years sometimes. Uh, again, there's another one that, I mean, I am using the Evesham model as a as a a guidance.
Can we try and?
Move on to the other one?
Yes, please.
Oh, right, okay, sorry, I was. Right, well, during the discussion, um, the point was raised about the actual role of the mayor, which I believe was changed at the time that councillor Lister was mayor. Now, the traditional role is that actually the role, correct title is that you are the council chairman. And the ceremonial or civic duties, you take the title of mayor. Uh, seemingly, and other people obviously agree, that it is an honour and a privilege to do it, to be mayor and it seems a good idea, but it is, but you actually know what's going on in the council. I mean, back in two thousand eighteen to nineteen, I had personal experience when I was deputy mayor. The mayor and I were both on every party and I did attend everyone because that way you knew what was going on in the council all the time. Um, and if you couldn't manage the commitment to do that, then you would have, you would say, no, I'm sorry, I can't do it. Now, whether it was for one year, you perhaps could move down one. Uh, but it seemed to us that the the group that I discussed it with, and it was the majority, I'm apologising to the one or two people on our group that I couldn't reach for holidays or whatever reason, but there was a majority who felt that it should go back to the traditional role, which I understand is recommended by health and other people, that it is the chairman of the council and who becomes the mayor for ceremonial duties and that it should go back to being that role.
And rationale for abolishing the management.
Well, simply because it shouldn't be necessary.
So I'll go to councillor Wynder first.
Um, yeah, very eloquently put, Valerie, thank you. Um, I made very similar arguments, and this first came in in twenty twenty, twenty one, yes.
In lockdown.
When I was deputy, yeah. Um, because initially I voted against segregating into the management committee and full council, having put in a year as mayor and uh chairing as I do two subcommittees um and barely managing to stay one step ahead of the main pack of councillors at my heels um in terms of grasp of detail, uh, I also, having, you know, but this, got out of bed at four o'clock this morning, left the house at half past four, been at work all day, I've been to Cornwall in a lorry and then up to Devon and then back, I got back in the yard at half past six, home at ten to seven, straight here, still in my workplace, there is no possible way I could fit in the role of mayor were its ceremonial duties and the grasp of detail required to attend every single meeting, every chair of committee. The whole idea, or one of the, part of the idea of splitting this role into two uh was to give working people a chance to be mayor as well as the um leisured retired, I think is a fair way to put it. Perhaps. I would be against going back to that model because I feel it would shut out a significant portion of members, seniority or not. I certainly couldn't undertake to do it again, and I think I'm, I don't know, fifth or sixth in line in senior, I don't know, I haven't counted, but so that would be my take on it.
I would point out that I also work full time.
No, I appreciate that.
Four o'clock in the morning. And if, I would suggest you perhaps could take chairs of ultimate, of search committees.
Chair, chair, order, there's a, a sequence, sorry.
Pardon, I was just replying to.
I'll do some leeway to councillor Coe, because she did introduce the recommendations, so I do take that. Councillor Stark.
And the first thing to point the clarification, we agreed as far as the mayor's election, and I do support seniority, because as I said to you, we do think length of service to the community should be a factor. I think we agreed it would be the deputy mayor that would be elected in twenty twenty six. So they would be ready for twenty seven step up.
Correct.
Is it for the clerk?
Correct.
When she's writing the procedures, that's fine. As regards the other point, I really do need to talk about evidence-based decision-making, which is very important. And there isn't any evidence put on this table why going back to a joint role for mayor, chairing all the committees, I just need to finish, would actually improve the performance of council. Since 2021, we have increased our property portfolio, that has increased tremendously the complexity that we are dealing with in terms of managing that property portfolio. If you look at the financial side as well, it's getting more complex, the financial regulations have been reviewed. We also have to be mindful pension rights, pension contributions, insurance, everything else. And on top of that, in this new structure, we delivered a major project that this town council should be held of given the size of us, which is the refurbishment of the market house. So if you're looking at evidence-based decision-making, and remember, this is about governance, this is about the town council looking at itself and deciding what's best for it in terms of performance of the council. The new structure has worked, the new structure has delivered, the new structure isn't broken. And what I'm not getting from those that want to go back to the old structure is where is the evidence to support that the old structure will improve the performance of the council? On that basis, I will be voting against the actual abolition of management committee until, and I do respect your proposal, councillor Coe, until we've got evidence that going back to the old structure would be, would have been a better structure for what we've had to deliver over the last four years, which has been amazing, and I congratulate everyone around that table for that. Thank you.
Councillor.
Yeah, could I ask where the evidence is that it wouldn't have happened if it was the old structure? Because I work full time, and you're talking about refurbishing the marketplace, which I know is a terrific thing that you had to do, but I've been working full time. And that was, that was also brought about under the previous administration, as were loads of other projects. I work full time, I've also built the hub out of a derelict building, raised over £25,000, and come to council meetings, and managed a disabled son, and a very old mother, and had my own health issues, and work every single night, and my phone's on 24 hours a day. I think councillor Stark, that you underestimate the people around this table.
Yes.
It's still, you're missing the point, weren't you?
As councillor Otting said, there is a series.
Now, I will be voting against this. I think the main reason is the current, the current structure is extremely flexible. If the mayor wishes to be both chair of the council and of the management committee, they can be, can be voted in to do the same job. Also, they can also be on every single committee. Under the old structure, there was a maximum limit.
No.
Note, under the old structure, there was a maximum number per committee. Under the current one, there is no maximum. Everybody could be a member of every single committee. So it is that, it is that. And I would like to hear from former mayors whether or not they would have actually been there had it been combined. And what their role is. I would say as chair of management, and you kindly voted me in every year since I was pastures. I've made sure that I was, I was always seen as subordinate to the mayor. I've never promoted myself in that role, or trying to supplant them as a representative of the town, et cetera. And I was very conscious, I was internally focused in terms of ensuring that the town is, or the town council governance was coherent and governed correctly.
I think Katie was before me.
Actually, I just want to say, nobody said that, anything you just said, nobody said that about you at all. And, you know, you've done a brilliant job in the last few years. This isn't about you as, as the management committee, it's just about whether it's worth going back to the old system or staying on the new system.
That's right.
I didn't take it as first.
I'm only going to be very brief, just to point out that the qualities required in a good mayor are not necessarily those required in a good chair. It's, it is, in some respects, two different roles. So just throw that in.
I'll go to councillor Open and.
Yeah, I think when you look at human endeavour, specialisation is one of the things which has led us to improve our lives, and I think that we have a lot of different skills around the table, which are all very, very valuable. But I think back to my early times of trying to understand those spreadsheets, and I would spend hours preparing for council meetings, and then Julian would come in and look across the line and just go, oh, yeah, so and so, and he would understand it straight away, and he would explain it to us. And I, I just think trying to recombine the roles would lose such a lot of the advantage of health specialisation. And I don't think anybody working or with serious commitments outside the council could do as good a job if they were trying to do everything. I think splitting the roles is absolutely logical and supports younger people and others who have other commitments, enables them to do the best job they can.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in one thing, because obviously, as a chair, you get two votes. We're always told that it doesn't matter who's the chair, yet I don't think anyone, apart from a certain party, a chair serves anything at the moment. So when we come to the vote, if you look around the room, there's seven of each of us. So I wonder what the casting vote will be on the chair. That's all I'm going to say. That is why splitting the two roles is wrong.
I know, I know. I'll stay neutral, because as the mayor, I know myself whether I can manage both roles or not. So I'll go to councillor Driscoll.
I've been listening to all the arguments going against, I can only speak in, I'll speak as my experience as mayor firstly. Everybody knows I threw myself into the role of mayor. I did a lot as mayor. I attended as many events as I possibly could as mayor. I saw it as a huge honour, to be fair. I think if I also had the responsibility of attending all of the committees, I don't think I'd have done, I would have been, I think I could have attended all the committees, but I don't think I'd have been as an effective ambassador for the town as I was. I, I, I don't think I would have been as an effective ambassador for the town as I was when I was mayor. I've heard lots of reasons why this current system is working well. I mean, as Louis said there, the current, if it ain't broke, why fix it? It, it seems to be, what was, it's working well as a system. You know, it gives an opportunity, as councillor Otting said, for everybody to sit on every committee that they're capable of sitting on. And it also gives an opportunity for anybody, regardless of their background, being their commitments, family commitments, be it job commitments, to potentially take on the role of mayor. Lots of us have huge personal commitments and throw ourselves into the role of councillor. Work-life balance is important, and having a good work-life balance and having good mental health is important. If we completely throw all of that consideration out and say, well, you know, work-life balance isn't important, just because you've got a full-time job, you could still be mayor, still work 12 hours a day. I don't think that, that isn't how we do it anymore. That's, that's really old school. We have a system now that works well and enables everybody, regardless of their current circumstances, to potentially, if they're a councillor, put their name forward to be mayor, knowing that some of the burden of management of the different committees will be taken up by, as councillor Otting says, an inwardly focused chair of the management committee. Though I will be voting against abolishing the management committee.
Well, as a previous mayor, and one that came in when this came about, and I risk of repeating myself in my last meeting where I got quite emotional. I've just made some bullet points, I want to go through those first, I think. First of all, don't have to attend all meetings. You just have to have your finger on the pulse, read the documentation as long as you can, have regular updates from the town clerk and regular updates from your committee chairs, that is sufficient enough. You don't have to attend all the meetings. If you wish to do so, you can. When I took on the mayor role, or I was offered to it with caveats from the Liberal Democrats, I went and spoke to my company and said, I've got this tremendous chance, something that I would never have dreamed of being able to experience. I said, this is what it is. They said, great, you need to talk to the upstairs. So I went and had a meeting with the CEOs of the company and explained to them, this is what I do. We did some digging, there's actually some allowances that are written in law by the government, that you can have time off, allocated time off from your company to serve public duties. I was given that extra time at no financial burden to myself. I appreciate, I can see John putting his hand up, that doesn't work if you're self-employed, but it was for me an allowance, just like councillor Wyndham saying, well, I couldn't do it because I do all these hours, that's a choice. I had that choice, I took that choice. I respect everyone's difference, but again, don't have to attend every single meeting. Councillor Pope's point about Julie Nutt, sorry, councillor Otting, I said last time, I really appreciate what councillor Otting's doing. There's not many people that could do the work he does, but we're all depending on him far too much. I've reached out a couple of times verbally in meetings, said I'd be interested in learning this, 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 this. Nothing yet has come about that, perhaps I need to actually get in touch and do that, but anyone can do that. Councillor Otting isn't always going to be here. We need to appreciate and respect what he's doing, and I'm sure we all do. But if the poor chap has a mental breakdown because we're pushing on him so hard, what are we then going to do? Just go, oh, well, no one knows, knows what to do because we've always depended on him. Unless we share these roles, breakdown roles, breakdown, various allocated projects and stuff, we're not going to learn that. So some people might just be sat over here thinking, well, what are we doing here? We're not learning anything, we're not getting the chance to do these things. Now, we were told when I was deputy mayor, coming in to be mayor, that this was not a recommended move to do. It wasn't what all councillors do, it wasn't particularly the right way to go, and we wouldn't recommend it. That came from Hulk. And I'm sure we could dig out the emails from the archive to back that up, because that was what was said. I sat in no end of meetings with the then clerk, with intervers, with the way not only we've been treated over saying we didn't believe that this was the right way to go, and listing great reasons why, to then them tell and ask you, you shouldn't, but it's still going to go ahead. So, and it was a horrible experience, but it was done, I believe, as I said before, for political reasons, to gain the control. You might not like that, but that's what I believe. And I'm more than willing to have anybody tell me and explain to me why not so out of the meeting, in the meeting over coffee, whenever, because I truly want to explain why that's the case. Currently, yeah, I agree, it is working, but it's working politically. And I've still retained, well, what I say every single meeting is, a lot of the time, we are pushed out of projects, we are pushed out of ideas. I could list off five things that I brought to the table over the year, five things, I can go through my social media with the idea that I, I spoke about in previous councils now that have been taken on by the now administration, and it's been their project, and I've not necessarily, with exception to the skate park, had much to do or much to say in. But again, I'm happy to discuss that with people that might want to know more about that outside of the meeting. So will I vote for it tonight? Do you know what? I probably won't. Because it is working, but I will be holding people to account if we keep getting pushed out repeatedly and not working as a full town council, which is what I say every time, because I want to work with you all. Do I like the seniority thing? No, I don't like that at all. I think it's terrible, to be honest. There could be somebody that comes in for one term, that can only do one term, perhaps for reasons like councillor Wyndham suggests, or for reasons that they've been told that they only have to do three hours a month. But they might be an absolutely amazing ambassador for this town and could absolutely promote it with the love and passion that this town deserves to pin us forward, working with us all and the chairman. So do I like seniority? No, not really, no. Do I like it because I might get another chance if elected, because it works on if you're elected as well? Yeah, that would be good, because my term was in lockdown and I had some thinking brilliant ideas. But I don't think I'll vote for the joining.
Still, it was a roller disc, though, in fact.
I wanted to do a. I probably waffled on, I apologise, but.
I also value the financials councillor Otting has done. So perhaps at this late stage, I would suggest that what I really appreciate is the fact that every meeting, every month, we have a meeting of all the councillors, which feels like it's full council, but it's not, it's called a management committee. If there is additional work that has been brought about due to property or whatever, perhaps a new subcommittee should be formed, and I wanted to call that the management committee. As a subcommittee, fine, but I do believe that the monthly meeting, when everyone is present, it should be.
I think, I think we're going to.
Are we going to split the two in terms of voting?
Can I propose an amendment? Because I've filled round the table here. These two things, because they are quite different, should be split into two separate votes.
The first one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Well, yes, I know, that would be more acceptable. I would be happy to suggest that the management committee continues, but as a subcommittee, which not everybody is entitled to go to, in the format that it is now. If that makes sense.
Sorry, Chair, just, just to clarify the structure, we have a full council. And there is a committee, the management committee, and then there are subcommittees that are below the management committee. That's how the structure is. If it was just one full council, then all those subcommittees will become committees. That's just the way the structure is.
It still seems to me that by putting all councillors on the management committee and meeting two out of three or three out of four, how many it is, Monday meetings in the, in the year, that we have very few full council meetings, and I think the full council meeting should be every month.
I just want to clarify one item, and this very quickly. So in the council proposal, if it's a drawing to one, one vote, and the mayor or chairman decides that, no, actually, I don't want to be the chair, we will open it up to the table. That is still possible.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You wouldn't have to be both, but there should be the option.
It's in the amendment.
It's in the amendment.
Don't understand.
Think on move the vote. The vote proposes from councillor Coe to the first management committee.
I think, I think on move the vote, the vote proposes from councillor Coe to force the management committee.
Yeah, if it's if it's then reinstated as a subcommittee, that's fine. I've no objection.
Same sharing with the different.
Yeah.
Second to.
Yeah. Yep, good. Councillor Ford's fifty. So all in favour of abolishing the management committee?
Yeah.
Two, three, four, five, six, six, four.
And all of us again.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, against.
Central, yeah, one up.
One up, so.
Okay, so the recommendations failed. Okay, so the the next item is. I'm the committee, and we have a recommendation on the thing, the M and T committee. Uh, how produce do you have to up on this week? Uh, yeah, uh some of you may be aware that the uh the government is setting up a a UK Town of Culture, Culture Award. Um and there was a, there was some interesting money associated with it in order to have amazing culture in towns across um England, Wales, and of England, let me see. It is UK Town, UK Town, UK, apologies. Um the town, when the City of Culture was announced, there was only something like a twelve-weekly time in order to get the applications in. Um so at the announcement for the UK Town of Culture, could happen at any stage. It will probably happen when things go quiet over Christmas, actually, if I've got any idea how these things work. So it might be an idea, so I I suggested we set up a working group to meet sooner rather than later, to look at how we could move forward with a potential application. Um the the, I think the the winning town will get something like in the region of three million pounds for a series of events. But there are a number of other shortlisted towns will also get significant money to develop their application. I think it's circa sixty thousand pounds in shortlisted towns. I think Ross, why shouldn't Ross be considered for this fantastic um honour accolade opportunity? Um there's lots of wonderful things already happened here, but there's so much more we could do if we had the means. Uh and it might be a way of bringing together um some organisations across the town um to the joint bid to jump in Ross and everything that's right about our lovely town. So yeah, I've offered to convene uh meetings initially. I'm asking councillors at this stage if they'd be interested in joining um a uh a working group in order to put the bid together. Uh councillor Windor.
I'd I'd be happy to say I'm now, if I can be of any use, with my grasp of detail.
Thank you. Thanks, councillor.
I I think this is a fantastic idea and an opportunity for the town. And uh we have so much, I think, uh to offer as a town and uh even surrounding villages, et et cetera, that I fully support this uh recommendation.
Uh councillor.
Um I'm worried about, I guess, the, what we all say about the staff being how it works and how much it would impact the staff.
Okay, I think initially to set up a working group, probably not much.
I don't think.
No, not self-working, but it's uh.
There's none to be any staff involvement at this stage, was there? I mean, obviously, if there, if it did get point of there being an application, then I'm sure it wouldn't, and that's where priorities would have to be.
Absolutely.
So all we took on the project, obviously.
Yeah.
I have some experience of writing funding bits, and and I'm offering that that skill set to try and help develop this, because I'm fully aware of the um potential drain on 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 time and strain is under. My particular skill set is in culture and the arts, as far as funding bits is concerned, which seems to marry with this particular application. So while I'm not saying I can do all of the work, I'm happy to pick up some of the load, um because I think it's an opportunity to facilitate this as a town council. Councillor.
Uh, yes, I I think we should be able to do this, put the initial application as a a council with minimum input from the staff because of still, you have. Uh and if we are shortlisted, it comes to sixty thousand pounds, where at that point we would need to employ somebody who is uh uh no disrespect to uh our current team, maybe more more appropriate event management types sets.
And I would just, as a process of doing this, could be of great benefit to the town as well. Um so when when the Herefordshire went forward for the City of Culture, um the award that has has lasted years and has been responsible for some fantastic projects around the county, so there's benefits going through the motions and going through the process of exploring, and just imagining what we could do with that sort of money in Ross. That kind of thought experiment has great benefit.
It's it's just a quite a thought. We've got the City of Culture Award that goes on at the moment. Is it a size qualification to this or not?
We are right smack bang in the middle of the right size.
We are. That that's what I just want to check, but I don't want to go down and someone's going to find out we're disqualified.
I think it's.
So I'm getting up people, less than twenty thousand population. It's like thirty thousand. But that's a good reason for arguing against the master plan of three thousand.
Exactly, this. I second the proposal.
Absolutely.
Possessing this year.
Yeah.
Seconded.
All those. Yeah, I think it's good. And it's a good argument.
Thank you. So, okay, so then the next one, from the same subcontractor council expenditure of one thousand three hundred forty eight pounds. It's from installation, we're hitting, so it's both. Yeah, it is what it says, really. We we need the money because we've got the additional lights. It costs more to store them and put them up and down. I saw, I've seen, so all those in favour? Councillor, you don't want that on me? I don't want Christmas. Yes, yeah. Uh, okay, and then again, the same, uh this is to uh recommend to full council that a Ross carnival working with people, uh to convene in terms of breakfast meeting. And a- again, there's been a a lot of talk and a lot of um a lot of the residents present desire for the carnival to come back in some form, and at the last meeting, it was agreed that we should have a working group to see how we could potentially start that ball rolling. It might well be that we, it begins gradually, it might not be on the same scale it was before, but that we could at least start the process, start that consultation, and see how we could um bring a carnival back. We've set some money aside for that, for 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 some form of carnival celebration um in the next year, and um our children's events officer is quite keen to to support that, and it's been built into the calendar, so we were looking at for to set the working group to look at how we can bring the carnival back. We think it would get, we think it it it's in in the surveys of residents, it came out on top was one of the things they would like to see returned, and so we were trying to have it. Residents of Ross, what they lost for? Happy to propose it. Second, yeah, second, yeah, all those in favour? Do you any, fair convene?
If uh if there's anyone that wants to convene, that would be good.
I'm happy to convene the first meeting, as I'm chair of CM and T. Um it would be good. Several councillors did express a desire to be involved in that working group. And as we have done with other working groups, we have had a floating convener, so we can take on responsibility meeting by meeting, so that it's shared between us. All a conveners should do is convene the meeting. And and what happens, what has happened to some working groups is the convener convenes the meeting and does all the work between meetings as well. What would be quite good is if we shared the workload, like, yeah.
We have, sir. So I'm a specialist in gardens.
Councillor.
We have it in the evening, because it is.
More of a.
Yeah. Okay.
But if we could have name, if councillor's one of the names of who'd be interested in volunteering that work for you.
Yeah, absolutely, of course.
Yeah, we had one, thank you.
So was that the councillor O'Donnell and councillor Harrison to share convening?
Councillor Harrison's currently offered, yeah. I I I'm happy to.
Happily.
Yeah, we'll get.
And the other. We have to.
Hey. Okay. And to note for minutes on the past. Better items, we're seeing that they currently accounts on the skate park, so they're action.
There's suspended, one of them, um I only received them today from her, the council's, the apologies that you've been today, um but you have been emailed all the others that was finished out of the main report.
And are there any options replied from this? Have you had a tendency to?
I've seen, I've seen read it. Um I think the email that followed the reports that they sent and suggested that they are proceeding with a study, a T one study that would be required for planning permission anyway, um basically because of the, um, how do we put it in here?
Concerns for me.
Yes, so uh uh sensi- given the sensitivity of the potential regards to the agreement that we're looking at doing, uh it would be to take, they've taken the proactive position, want to take the work now, so this from my understanding of it, will come from the section one of six money that is available. They will use that, that this is something that would need to be done for planning anyway. So it's just doing it first to see what the risks are before going any further down the line with the project, which makes sense. Um but that's that's as it was received only today, and I haven't posted it yet.
Yeah, councillor.
That's it. Thank you. I've a skin read, uh read it, uh et cetera, uh and uh the one concern that I had, it didn't seem as if anybody looking at um at monitoring of the landfill sites, because I know that the the local business that's quite far from it has to monitor it or been told to monitor it, yet there doesn't seem to be any actual monitoring on the site itself.
And Charlotte did, has asked that question, if there's any data relating to the monit- any monitoring that's done in the past, and there is no evidence of that.
Councillor, the first.
It won't be boring down, so it it won't, it will be above, so I'd be.
That's that, sorry, it it there are drainage, there's mention of having to do drainage works, et cetera, so that vision pouring down. That's so.
There are slightly different rules for food establishments in terms of how we can do near to as, near to a landfill site. Um so I I I am confident that all the necessary um tests will be done that are required for development of this size and scale, and I'm quite confident, and Nigel, the new guy, this seems to be an area of speciality for him. I'm 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 sure he will get that right. I saw him today. I've also had a good meeting with Lana from the community today around the skate park. I'm, I have been concerned that we seem to have slowed down a little bit over recent months because of the changeover of the role of Andrew Houston as project manager to Nigel, and I'm organising a roundtable event for January festivals parties, that that will be the landscape designers, that will be funding officers, that will be the project managers, um and and the working group, and any other parties that feel it's relevant for them to be there.
By mental health, because they're the ones that lay down the conditions for the land.
It's at the moment, people are siloed, people are siloed and not talking to each other, so try and get it on, try and get people together in January, move it forward.
Yeah. Yes, I think.
Okay, so uh now action for us apart from perhaps the roundtable in January.
Yeah, I think it's received a note at this stage.
Just the record, that's why I'm joining immediately. It's important, I can report back on the skateboard. Uh, okay, so we'll go through uh the working groups, uh play strategy, I think to report, uh skate park. So from that, you. Uh, any good development?
I think so.
Uh changing places, so councillor Ferrer's not here, councillor.
Yes, at the finance and property committee meeting, we voted to agree to the grant to of up to twenty thousand pounds from White Valley.
National lands.
National landscapes, um uh to start the design phase.
Okay, thank you.
But that money has got to be spent by end of February twenty sixth.
Uh Ukraine's.
Uh there were some concerns about the new contract that had been sent across from Ovruch, already contacted um the chief exec of Bury Borough Council, who were going through some of the twinning arrangements in a similar, similar time, haven't signed their contract yet, and talking to their people about what their legal department are saying. They will share their advice for this.
So if I just go back to what Carla said, is it realistic that that money can be spent on the changing places toilet by that time?
So just so it's only for research and development, there should be plans and stuff, it's not, we do. There may be more money next year, we don't know yet, towards actually building it, so this is just for research and developments, the plans, et cetera.
Okay, sorry, technical term that.
Okay, so Mayor's announcements, um since the meeting of five point, uh I attended the state service on the eleventh of November. Uh the Hereford lights switch on the sixteenth of November. Uh on the nineteenth of November, I presented a gift to the mayor's Christmas card winner. On the twenty second of November, I attended a pen and singer Christmas concert at St Mary's Church. Uh the one twenty sixth of November, I visited Ashford Park Primary School to deliver a ceremony, uh to talk about the town castle. Uh, I do, so there's been a team, got a hundred and asked lots of questions, and one person asked me about a helicopter. So on the fourth of December, I attended a cow service, uh and an opening ceremony in Boston Victorian Market. On the sixth of December, I attended the Border Belts Christmas concert at St Mary's. And yesterday, seventh of December, I attended Ross Town Band's concert, the Orpers. So visiting this run-up to Christmas is particularly busy as well. Fortunately, January's looking a bit quieter. Um, okay, town clerk.
Um, very interesting circulated, there was the Health Council Electoral Review um invite circulated on the fourteenth of November, and the consultation has been circulated on the agenda this time. And the Storm Claudia update circulated, uh we contacted Monmouth Town Council to offer support to them after their flooding on the eighteenth of November. And there, a link to a press release from the government regarding the results of the strengthening the standards of conduct framework for local authorities in England consultation um has been circulated as we submitted a response on that. Uh with PCC newsletter circulated on the first December. And there is an invite that you should have all received about um events that's being held on the seventh of December and to celebrate the Jewish festival of Chanukah, which you should have all received an invite to that. They've asked that all councillors be invited, uh let me know if you have received that. And lastly, there is a briefing note that's uh again only been received for all town councils about Herefordshire council parking payment machines. Um essentially, the key points are that they're upgrading uh is that small contractual changes plus upgrades in the management of Herefordshire council's parking payment machines. Uh they just wanted it shared with town councillors, uh just so essentially, it's the upgrade to give people more choice about how they pay, as card payment will be available in all council-run car parks and on-street pay and display. All machines will have vehicle registration mark key pads, which means users will need to input their registration number. The new technology will make it a quicker transaction for users, and importantly, people can still choose to pay with cash if they want in all council car parks and on-street pay and display. Um but I can circulate um the note with the background, et cetera, um after the meeting, but as I said, I only have that in.
Does that mean that the parking meter that they've just put in on through, it's going to have to be upgraded?
I need to have a look at what one. I need to have a look at what one, you would like to think that they've allowed for that, and it is one, but I, I haven't. Like I say, it's coming this evening, this evening.
So I'll have to check. Okay, thanks. I'm not seeing the next one, you know, to review the location for the world show. We're very happy with that. Receiving. Uh, there's finance and council, uh, receiving the schedule of payments, and that's on the website. Keep the vote.
Uh, yes.
How's the staff, after the pause? They will answer just. All those available.
Yes, thank you. Sorry.
Stephen says a payment last meeting. That is on that side. Uh, finance external audit twenty four, twenty five, uh, this was to a single, uh, report. completed review of the ongoing of the year ended thirty one, twenty five. Agreeing action required, uh, that looks like a clean bill of health from what I read.
Sound of applause. Well done.
Um, yeah, and it's just a note, um, in the letter from your. Dangerous for the expectation this guy for twenty twenty five, which is mandatory for the twenty five, twenty six period. And it cites the paragraphs that are relevant, but basically there's an additional assertion to be included regarding email management, websites, compliance with both the GDPR, um, and the data protection app, and the requirement to have an IT policy. I'm currently working on checking, we forgot what's being based for that. The requirements in relation to assertion ten are listed in paragraph, it lists the paragraphs one point four seven, one point five four. And the local authorities should review these requirements and take appropriate steps to ensure compliance. So most of the things, obviously, we've just had the website upgraded to meet the, um, requirements, all councils now on the dot gov dot U K email address and things like that. So most of the things have been gone through, um, what's required. We have already taken action on, um, it's mainly checking the IT policy that we've got everything in place. About that, there is a, like, a few issues that we can compare.
Second, I was. Sorry, council.
I, I haven't read the, um, Herefordshire, uh, county council chief secretary's note. Uh, I noticed in there that, um, Herefordshire's, uh, that you need permission to take your laptops abroad. Uh, that I, I do recommend that we adopt a, say, the same policy for those of us who are sad enough to work when we're on holiday. Um, uh, that we adopt that, there, there's, there's two reasons for that. One is that just plain security, as you have GPCR, but the other one is, um, uh, you can actually, if anything's encrypted on yours, and we do use encryption on that, that, um, you can run foul of some of the, um, uh, uh, export conditions, now that they can work laptops abroad. And that includes friends as well, work friends.
Okay, so to confirm, notice of conclusion of all of it is in the slide.
Yes.
Thank you. Where is that displayed?
On the notes board and it's on the website.
Uh, health and safety to receive reports, uh, an update on the application of council safety policy. Uh, that was included. No accidents, misses. Any comments?
All right, I've, I've got one comment. Uh, every month we hear there's no accidents, no misses virtually. Um, I'm just wondering whether we've been too complacent to know we're a small authority.
Uh, no, and the operations manager felt the same and has done toolbox talks on that and is assured that anything will be reported if there is anything, especially has achieved that view as well and has reiterated that. And so that has been, so perhaps in the past maybe, but definitely now and on. That's being a regular feature so that it's, it's the, hopefully that will reduce any complacency. It's, it's sort of a, a regular topic now. For discussion.
Exciting, uh, consider options for workshops facilitated by Becky Wong. And agreeing that spend. To, we were waiting on options for this.
Yes, but I did have a conversation with the council, I think we were tasked with liaising with about options. Um, and I don't know if you want, if you want.
Right, yeah, so, so I do apologise, didn't have too much time to, to really consider that. And I've been really struggling with this, that's why I wanted more of a, this, I'm at this, uh, the full council meeting is, um, how we actually go about it. Um, do we have one big meeting to, um, discuss? Um, what our strategy is of the different pillars, whether it's culture related, whether it's amenities related or, or economically related, or whatever categories we have. Um, that we have done in the past. And or do we split it up into three, three, four lots, which is everyone's still invi-, invited, but there is a more of a focus of what the outcome is. And then we come together as a council, both on which were our priorities. I would say that, um, we've virtually done everything on a, a previous, uh, five year plan that we took, um, some years ago, uh, there. Um, so it is time that we do do something to do that. Um, but I'm ready. Uh, open minded, um, uh, to the rest of the council's opinions.
So I'll just add as well that obviously there was some discussion about whether we have one further session from the trade, the workshops that we had, the first workshop that we had. The option of doing that and then the away day separately, because that had been the discussion, um, previously. So whether, I think, having one day would obviously cost less than having the separate sessions, but it depends on, um, what people's think would work best and what would get the better outcome.
Thanks, the board. And my only worry is that we'll don't offer turning out. So it, it's a lot of money that councils spend unless we are willing to turn up.
Well, and that, that might be a reason to do a one day rather than split into, because you're unlikely to get. Obviously, it would be a full day, so that is still a commitment from people. But if you did split it into the four separate, then you, the, the idea that you need everyone to come to the four separate ones, which is.
Yeah, no idea.
Happen, um.
But also, um, sorry, following on from that. Actually, how much difference it's made, because in my view, I, I don't think it's made a job of difference, looking at some of the behaviours around the table over the last several weeks, I don't think it's made a job difference.
I think, uh, one day would be my preference, to be honest, um, I mean financially, but also respectable to, uh, to everyone that we've heard tonight are all so busy. Uh, my question would be though, is, is why do we actually need a facilitator at these costs? Um, when we're talking about a five year plan for the town council, I think that's more than achievable with the current staff that we have just to direct the meeting where it goes, jot the notes down of what the discussion is around the table, um, and, and move on to each point. Um, I don't see the necessity to spend this much money on a facilitator that might waffle on for four or five of those hours, when we can actually talk about a five year plan and get stuff done, as you say.
I, I think it would be useful to have somebody independent of the council to, I think that would be quite a commitment for a member of staff to have to be able to do that for it to have a worthwhile outcome. I think it would benefit from somebody outside of the council being there.
Can I respond? So then, i- in essence, do we need a facilitator of this caliber? Can we find someone who's that can ask to direct and manage meetings for us, taking the notes and driving on from each point?
Yeah, the only thing that I wanted to bring up, the only thing that came away from the last away day that we actually came away with.
Good sandwiches.
Was, yeah, good sandwiches and the ten cup that never came off. In fact, I don't think there was ever a meeting about it. Out of all the brilliant ideas that was put out there, that was the one that was chosen. There wasn't ever a meeting about it. I don't know how much that councillor's away day cost of council, but that was the only thing that came out of it.
Yeah, we, we did have three working group meetings, but, um,
that.
But we've, yeah, it never went anywhere, you're quite right, but we did meet and we, we met with some event organisers, as far as I recall. And then it, uh, it died a bit of a death, but yeah, so.
So I'll just add to what councillor Lister said just quickly, just to say that the intention for the away day, not the workshops, but the away day would be the staff to attend as well and participate in it with councillors.
Oh, thank you. Absolutely.
Uh, I was thinking this, um, I've got a quiet Christmas this year. Uh, 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 because both my girls have decided to emigrate to Scotland, great place.
Late choice.
Yes. That, 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 uh, uh, and also my workload at work has gone down considerably. Uh, I'm offering to prepare an outline for an away day and also facilitate that to come up with a plan and I'll, I'll table that at the January meeting. I think there's, there's an outline, I think that kind of.
Thanks, I think that's a very generous offer. I would, I would also point out that apart from health, there's another organisation called Gloucestershire Association of Parish and Town Councils. And there is, um, that they offer training. I, I do believe a certain person that's involved in their training may even be resident in Ross.
I have made contact with him about when we joined.
I understand that, I, I told him about that, but I think there might, might be some, I think as far as facilitating this kind of an event is concerned, there might be value in exploring that as an opportunity, a possibility.
I've worked down corridor from him and I think he'd be very good at this.
I think Becky offered us, um, emotional understanding of how the council works or doesn't work. And we're not actually dealing with that, we're not really addressing that, are we? I think she offered us a way forward to make things more positive. And if we find a better way to work together, we will get so much more done. And she was brilliant at that.
I would like to echo, uh, councillor Pope there. The only issue we did have is that we didn't have every person that's in this room in there from those days. So we have got that mindset, we learnt a lot, a lot of people didn't. So a lot of the negativities that we learnt about are things like the assumptions and those sort of things. If I was to go, oh, you're assuming to somebody that wasn't in that meeting, they would not get the full spot of what I mean by that. Um, so, but I completely agree what you just said.
I agree with what you said too.
There is the option, so one, so to do another three hour session to finish off what started there would be six hundred and sixty three pound for all councillors, the whole, so that is an option, a separate to the away day for you to consider.
Absolutely.
The facilitators should really, um, be chosen on the basis of what we want to achieve from our waiting. And I'm not sure we are completely clear yet of what we do want to achieve. When we had the five year plan away day, and we had a very good facility there from, was it SLCC or some?
No.
But the point is, we knew what we tried to achieve. So when the facility came in, they knew exactly what we were trying to, the end goal that we wanted. I still think, I still don't think you've got a clear view amongst all of us, exactly what we want out of this.
The thing is with a five year plan as well, elections. So we can spend money on a five year plan and in eighteen months' time, you have a whole new council in it.
Yeah, that's a reelection point there, isn't it? Let us stay in, because we can finish this five year plan. Politics.
That is always a politics.
That was, that was one of the points that Becky made very, I felt, was that she said we need to think of a ten year plan and actually to carry things from council to council.
Yes.
Because, you know, there are a lot of good ideas around the table. Um, it takes a while to get to know how council works and to bring those ideas to fruition. And sometimes five years isn't enough. And it would be such a shame to lose those ideas. So a ten year plan, when she said that, I thought, yeah, absolutely.
Thing is, with a ten year plan, you're stifling the people that are coming in there, their ideas, what they want to do. I'm not going to keep on listening about this, but that's what I'm trying to say, is there are other people that come in with different ideas. I know you can change stash, but it is worth thinking about.
I, I would just add that it is worth considering as well, from part of my reason for wanting something, a new version in place, is to give the staff the idea, the, the priorities, the councils, that we, those have been agreed, because obviously different councillors have their own priority projects that they'd like to produce, so for it actually to be agreed, as to this is the agreed priority. That gives us a mandate to work towards those because it's been agreed.
Absolutely. And, and just, there are some things that we need to think long term about regardless. I mean, capacity in the graveyard in ten years' time, you know, things like that. And if, if you're going to be, oh, we're going to need more land, these, these are, regardless of your political allegiance, these are some things that are going to, we're going to need, everyone's going to need to get their hands dirty, so to speak. And, and the, that.
That's very lack.
Hatred, sorry, and, and housing as well, we're talking about this at county council level, you know. You've, you've got to put, you've got to start building the houses now, not, not just for the problem today, but for the problem in ten years, for the problem in twenty years.
Absolutely. Uh, council and escape.
Oh.
I, I think others have said it, I, I don't need that to, or we can always change it. Uh, if we want to, at least there'd be a framework and then people could very rock set it and change priorities. Even if this is the elected council or ditch it or, um, add.
I, I, I agree with you, that was discussed in the first place, it'd be a living document anyway, it's something that we can always resort back to. It's just something that's going to flow nicely, so yeah.
Council.
I think the, the Carla's point is the, the one that hit home for me, to be honest, the councillors come and go, but the staff remain as a general rule. Um, I did the point about having a mandate to say to the council, this is what we're trying to achieve. You go away and decide how we're going to do that, that provides a level of constancy over five, ten, twenty years. When we go on that election cycles, I think that's an important point.
Yeah.
Says agreeing to develop a strategy. If we talk about options, council have been offered to prepare and facilitate. Uh, we've got the option from Gloucestershire, should we ask the club to formulate some options and give us some options for the next meeting perhaps? Yeah, that's sensible. Way for. Does everybody have them with that? Do we need to vote?
Uh, no, I don't think so, if we just work, unless you do what about whether we need another training session as a separate thing, is that something people want or not?
I think, I think we've got an independently facilitated, uh, strategy there.
I think that's completely different.
Thanks, the board.
Um, I, I think the two are completely different, absolutely different. Um, and I think the only way that it would be worth us having, uh, another one, Becky was absolutely amazing. Um, and she was, and I think, like, thank you Carla for, for getting in touch with her, because she was phenomenal. And worth her weight in gold, but I think with her being worth her weight in gold, only if we can have a round the table agreement. Every single councillor has gone to turn off.
I don't, I don't think we'll get that agreement tonight, depending on dates and calendars and, don't think that's possible.
Personal circumstances. Send him this work.
I'm happy to. That's the vote.
But we've got an intention to do that, couldn't we?
Good, yes. That's what I think.
Uh, I'd. I think we ought to do this, uh, can we, can we be working together for another eighteen months? I think we ought to do this, uh, because we're going to be working together for another eighteen months before the next election, et cetera. But we may wish to give up a Monday. One evening council meeting that we need to turn off.
Yeah.
Um, and that probably will mean we won't be able to do it. But I suppose it's the April one, or um, or the next one will be in July, simply because of all the statutory stuff we've got to do. Um, uh, from there, so I I think if we come back with that. Then we may be able to fit it in March. And so either March, April or July are the days that we were to do it, where most of us are already committed to. And I I'd, I suggest we defer this chair until um, till January, I'll come up with. Some options for the um, strategy away day, building in that, so, but, because I think the two. Need to be coordinated, even if they are separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've got. Okay, so we've had some consultations, the first was to consider response to the SNP invitation to comment. And the issues identifying practitioners.
That this was the, that the one with all the, with the question. I I thought, uh, my personal opinion was, it was. Uh, but it's good to actually have these, uh, these questions, are we actually doing it correctly? And I felt that we were doing it mainly correctly, um, already apparently, so there may be one or two. Which I'm not totally familiar with, that the clerk can advise on, do we need to tighten up, et cetera. Uh, I I felt as a, um, as a council, we're doing that, particularly now we've upgraded our website. Now, all the financial stuff is now published easily on that website, people can see it. Et cetera, both pre and post meeting, because all our past recommendations still exist.
Uh, yeah, I'll say. How far back they were starting, older stuff that I just think time wise moving across, they haven't got to yet. Couldn't tell you how far back it goes, but.
I'm thinking things like all our financial records that weren't originally published now are. Ten to the monthly expenditure or.
Oh, okay, uh, I think we've just been doing it ongoing as as meetings are happening, you can put them on there rather than. Going back.
Uh, no, to to going forward, is that.
Yes, yeah.
So I think we are meeting most of people, not all of them.
Councillor Stone?
And what's the stages of this guy in relation to standing on external orders? Will they pick up on this side?
Yeah, yes.
That's important, certainly. So we really do need to.
Since we've described that we will extend our internal.
We'll pick up. Are you satisfied with that need to hold, or are there any issues?
Uh, no, just the the new plans, that we've got to make sure that this year we. Working towards and we've done most of them for the.
So you just need a support from, was it, to fully go on with it or what?
No, I'm working on that for the policy of then come to a meeting, this is the consult, this is just when we want to respond to their consultation.
But you are walking along. Necessary to respond to the consultation?
Need to, but I'm I'm happy that the clerk is close to this, the clerk wants to respond to this. There's no, no issue with that.
If you're walking along, yeah, we're happy to.
I'd be happy to propose that.
It's fine, as long as you follow all the bases.
And another consultation is to consider response to the heritage council. Are we going to do the same thing?
I I mean, I I I've responded to this already as as a as a board member on DB, I was required to respond to it. It it's not particularly, the town council, um, has. A close relationship and officers have a close relationship with the staff at DB and would be perfectly, it's perfectly able. To respond on behalf of the town camp. Uh, on there, and I think, I think the officer's view of the DB would be of value. I'd propose this.
Councillor Otting?
It's a very quite confusing basis, um, not sure I've fully understood what it is trying to do. But I agree with you that I think, um, our small work, Carla.
Eighteen minutes.
Uh, that I think, um, a response by the office, um, should be good.
Just not split for, it's designed for businesses, sorry.
Councillor Wilson proposes, Councillor Wilson's second.
For Carl's.
Sorry, yeah, the clerk to respond.
Voting for someone else to do some work.
Sorry, Carla.
Okay, next item is to receive details from heritage council or propose bus infrastructure conclusions and agree any consent.
Page seventeen on the screen, please, that lists them all.
Uh, councillor Boylan?
Oh, it's all right, I'm waiting until I was just put my hand up.
Okay.
I was just put my hand up because the bus thirty three is.
A proposal from councillor Liston to extend it by thirteen months. Seconded by councillor Bailey. Very common. Call in favor.
Yeah, first stop upgrades, F C H. No, it's not that one.
Yeah, there are photos.
F C Scoken presentation it was.
Yeah, that's just a supporting letter, isn't it?
Yeah, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, three up from the bottom.
Yeah.
Go down to seventeen, you just list them all.
This is something in what the heritage council proposes, there has been raw feedback on these proposals. If anybody's got feedback. Councillor Boylan, your hands are.
Yeah, um, obviously, it's been in the paper about the number thirty three bus. Um, not stopping at the bus stops that are there, um, customers being stranded. People, um, not being able to get to work, so I think. What would seem more important to me than having newer bus stops is that their buses actually stop. Where they're supposed to stop and be able to take on board enough passengers. Um, as I think the bus will be used an awful lot more because people will be waiting there for a good two hours for the buses.
That's obviously why, while I hear that, that's that's not what this particular piece of work is about this evening.
I know.
And the briefing that we had was about improvements to the bus infrastructure, and I completely agree that the increase should stop, and I've been dealing with parents of students who've. Missed the bus on numerous occasions, or not not just missed the bus, had no reason. I do believe, I am told, I think councillor Stark might be able to update you on that, I think there are, there are things in hand that are hopefully going to be.
Yeah, second bus.
Has been only seven. I I mean, basically, long story short, because I'm looking, I'm looking at time, lots of cleans of the existing infrastructure, all of the lines being redone on the. A new, a new stop outside Aldi, which was supposed to have been done eleven years ago. When the section one O six twenty came through, but there's been such a backlog of stuff, it's never been done, and this is just for the run around bus to stop at. Uh, and it has started stopping there now, so that people can get the shopping and get on the bus and drop, you know, so they haven't got to carry the shopping for miles. Uh, which I think is a relatively good thing, and to also put on some more digital timetables on the ones that haven't got them. Um, there's a couple on there that shouldn't be on there, the bottom ones, because they're not in within Ross Town, but they just got stuck on there because unfortunately, people weren't fully clear of the boundaries. Um, but this is just to let you know that there are. Being made to the town structure and a new bus stop happening outside Aldi. Uh, no, it's all.
Councillor Pope?
On stand two, is there really no space to have a, um, a perching seat put?
Uh, we could ask for one.
Yeah.
Any response?
We can feed that back, this is town councillors, we can feed that back.
Yeah.
Councillor Liston, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, so, well, the first one was just to to clarify, uh, what you meant, there were the last two not being in Ross Town.
The last two in the document.
Oh, sorry, apologies.
Yeah, I I commented on both of them, yeah, as well.
Ah, okay, um, uh, yeah, so as you, you can, we can request improvements to this and or. I guess we can email ourselves, because the emails are in within the supporting letter, um, but, uh, I was quite positive to see on there the John Corr High School application for one. Um, I just, the question. This has suggested improvements for all of these, what is actually the likelihood that these will happen? So of course, every single point of these are really positive. It's a great.
Hundred percent.
Money definitely happens.
They've got the money, they've got the money, they've got to spend it.
So, uh, the other question that, uh, that I just want to ask is the benches, uh, that are Eddie Cross Street, um, regularly, I'm told. Um, that they're currently, they're not fixed, no one knows who owns them, they've been put there by a wonderful person some years ago, um. They're no man's land, but they're in poor disrepair, um, we obviously can't really comment to them because they have said. They're not our responsibility, and I just, can we comment that to them? Can we work out what we can do with them? Can we do anything with them?
You can still make the point, you make the point.
Yeah, cool, okay, if people are happy to, yeah, please.
Yeah, going back to councillor Boylan's point, which I totally agree with, it's a disgrace. Unfortunately, this is really based just for the infrastructure, it's not for bus services, including, unfortunately, councillor Boylan.
I understand that.
And they're not stopping at the stops that are already. And we've made that point a number of councillors, for one party.
Yeah.
At at local council, it's been, it has been mentioned.
Uh, just going off of what councillor, uh, councillor Liston's just said about these no man land, um, benches, that I I've noticed one just outside John Corl. Where the, um, bus stop is, and it's completely dangerous, I walked past it the other day thinking. Even if a child wanted to wander on it, it's just so, so dangerous, and I just want to know who's responsible for that, and if that's something we can look into as well, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Replace the van. It's dangerous and it's all. Let's have a look.
There's flaxmiz.
Yeah, sorry, I hadn't, there was just one other point, uh, the, um, the Aldi Brookend Street one, um, wh- while my office overlooks it. Whilst at the moment it is working, because that, not that many people are actually getting on it, um, because they're not aware that it's there, when it is there, it's causing absolute. Mayhem. Now, I appreciate it's only there for a few seconds, but the people getting on the bus. Do need a little bit of extra time to get on the bus, people are bibbing their horns, they're trying to swerve around, um, I suppose this is a. A question that I need to email to our council councillors outside of the meeting, but when the lines were done, that was actually nice aside. It would be interesting to see if we could get, although it was ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, never happened, some red lines along there, because we've got the lorries coming in. You know, we've got the cars going out, there's blue, uh, blue badges parked on the yellow, the buses are there, it's causing that, there's going to be an accident at some point.
Yeah.
Um, especially if it starts getting used an awful lot more, so I think road safety needs to be.
This was a point we made, that we were concerned about it, um, they said, I mean, they said it has started stopping there. It was a condition of the build of Aldi.
Hmm, yes, it was, yeah, yeah, which is crazy.
It's, it's not just that.
But it's not crazy.
It's the traffic commissioner's requirement. Or the build of Aldi.
That, that's fine, but we need to look at the road traffic safety round there, and consider if we can some red lines going on the, on the, on the far side of the road, it's not at all. It's a, let's think about safety.
I think we could include the road safety element.
But we did make that point, councillor.
Just to make the point, while those are all excellent points, by some means addressing, as ever, it is an impatient motorist issue. Rather than anything with the bus.
Yep.
My issue wasn't with the bus.
No, I'm saying, I appreciate that, we should have a cycle lane along there and that would.
Comments to go back on. So the comments for us, uh, perching seats at stand two, um. The regarding repair and upkeep of the benches at Eddie Cross Street Bus Stop. And the bench at John Corl High School Bus Stop and road traffic safety at Aldi, ways of improving that.
Good point, thank you. Uh, the next one is to consider response to local, uh, commission. Conversation on that, the heritage, councillor Stone.
Yes, and just to explain, and the council has already given its, its comments on this. It's agreed that we will have retained a single member ward at county council level. It's also been made clear to us that these proposals do not affect town councils or parish councils. So if you are going to comment on these proposals, it's about what you say about the county council boundaries. And the the ward's distribution of that, but there will still be single member wards, there's still going to be fifty three councils. That has already been agreed. So that, that's taken, so beyond that, I'm not sure what you as a town council would actually want to say. But then it's up to you, I think, do you want to say anything, councillor Otting?
I I did look into all that, and I couldn't see what the actual changes were that were affecting the. Free Ross County Council wards. Mr. Reminded.
I don't think they proposed any changes yet.
No, they have proposed. There's, there, there are two principles, one. It will be single member wards, not multiple member wards, and two, it will be fifty three councillors, but they still have to decide the distribution. Of of the areas to make up that fifty three member council. And that could lead to some changes, for example, Wilton, does that come into Ross and like that, or an issue?
I think as a town council, we probably don't have a view on that, though, but it's probably open to all councillors and members of the public. To comment on this consultation. Or suggest that we do that.
You could.
As individuals or as town councillors.
You could comment individually if you want.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably the way to go with this. What, why would we not have a view as a town council?
It's not affecting your town council, that's what I'm saying, it's not affecting the six member wards of the town council. But if you had a view individually on Ross East should be shaped, or Ross West, or Ross North, then it's fine.
Well, yeah, I have a view, because I do think it will affect the town council.
How's it not going to?
Because the, because the town parish, the parish wards aren't changing, it's only the, it's only the wards for county councils.
Yes.